This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until July 15, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and our conference ID is 203-386-491-Pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Again, welcome, everybody. Please, everyone on teams mute your mic and turn off your camera until you're recognized. Okay? Let's start with a roll call. Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
Present.
Clerk Corey Mitters.
Present.
Select Board Member Dean DeCastro.
Present.
Select Board Member Jeff Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair Peter Kukolos is present. We have a few changes on the agenda. Let me, let me go over them a little bit. First of all, you'll notice that we had, we added an emergency agenda item on, for the, for a rescheduling of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. And it's an emergency agenda item. This may make a point. It was placed on the agenda because, because it's an unanticipated topic and, and it was put out as soon as possible. The Board of Health action last night and the potential health or public safety concerns warrant such expedited action. So I think it's important that we do that. We start, we're going to start with our minutes and then we have public announcements and agenda item requests. Then we start our new business and, and I moved, the first thing on the newer business agenda will be the proclamation historic, historic preservation month, May 2022, Frank Messina. And then we'll get into a discussion and of the rescheduling of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. We then go into drinking water and testing and pumping update. Now, both of those items will have, not yet, Frank. Thank you. I moved it, but not that far up. And I apologize. But anyway, those two have public comments coming in. Then we get into public comments on business agenda and for the following business agenda items. We consider a special one-day alcohol permit, Cape Cod Commercial Fisherman's, actually that's a transfer to a different date. Consider revisions of two temporary outdoor dining regulations. And we do not have anything right now on the annual town meeting article review. So that's, that's dropped. Then we'll go into executive session and not return to public meeting. Okay. So first thing on the agenda are the minutes for April 26, 2022. So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any changes or comments? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I have two. First is on page two, under the public announcements section, second paragraph, third sentence in the parenthesis, which reads, "with a 2.95% convenience fee." I'd like to insert the phrase "for credit cards." And then on page six, in, under paragraph F, in the second paragraph, second line at the end, just before the word harmless, put the word "hold, hold harmless." That's it.
Okay. Any other changes? No, we have a, we have a motion and a second discussion. See none. Let's vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. We have public announcements and agenda item requests. Anything from the board? Shereen?
Yes. Thank you, Peter. On Saturday, Senator Warren came for a town meeting in Chatham. It was a well-attended event at the community center. Prior to the meeting, I was having a discussion with Rep. Peak. We were just casually discussing the airport and, and had mentioned to her that, you know, if, I thought maybe at some point we should be reaching out to the federal side of the FAA rather than the regional on some high-level conversations. And so when we got into, we were invited into a room to speak briefly to Senator Warren. We got to speak to her, you, you were there as well, Peter. We got to speak to her about community sustainability, the housing crisis on the Cape, the relationship to, you know, so many job openings and whatnot. But again, Rep. Peak had mentioned the, the conversation with FAA. So I think a follow-up with Senator Warren's office. I'll, I'll follow up with the town manager on a more in-depth discussion about what we discussed. It was brief, but it's an opportunity and I was happy to attend.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Dean and then Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I will fashion this as an agenda item request from me, but it's really a modification of something that's already on the proposed agenda for next week. A May 10, Item DB update on outdoor watering ban, water conservation methods, Dr. Dunkinson. I'd like to have inserted there, in addition to the update, possible reconsideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to get a regular update on our vacancies, the, what, what positions we're filling and what positions remain vacant from the town manager. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? None. Staff? No. And anyone for the public? Not yet.
Public announcements I wanted to make.
Oh, you did? Okay. I apologize. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your tolerating me. Hi, Frank Messina, Chairman of the Historical Commission. I just want to make a couple of quick announcements from the public and for select people. South Chatham Village, South Chatham Village, the, the proposal that the Historical Commission has been working on for the last five years to obtain a nomination of the South Chatham Village as a national registered district. It, it actually, about 20-some years ago, they attempted to do that and they failed. It wasn't, wasn't, it didn't go through. Well, you know, first you don't succeed, try, try again. And with our preservation consultant, Eric Dre, we resubmitted another nomination and we're, we're at the five-yard line. Mass Historic has accepted it and that the next step in the process is a public informational meeting. So the, all of the residents in the proposed, the South Chatham Village area, plus the public, will be invited here in this building at 10:30 on May 25. So there was actually letters going out from Mass Historic to all the residents to let them know about the meeting. And the purpose of the meeting is to just inform people what are the positives and some negatives, I guess, depends, you know, what does it mean to be a national registered district? Assuming that is successful and we don't get any major pushback from the community, then it will proceed to something called the State Review Board on June 8 and then submitted to the National Park Service. And so Chatham will have, in addition to the Old Village National Registered District, will have the South Chatham Village as a national registered district as well as the, the HBDC. So I think it's, you know, we're working hard on it and I think it's, it's effectively a national recognition of the village as a national registered site. And we're very proud about that. Just quickly, another, another item, you may have already know about this, but on Memorial Day, there's a, a group called the Revolutionary War Memorial Working Group, okay? And we have been working on this for some time now and received some community preservation funds to actually have a memorial, a plaque and a major stone in Chase Park. And we're planning, everything coming together, working with Gary Glazer, the, you know, the, the new records parks person, you know, to install that stone. And we hope to have a dedication, a formal dedication on May 30. It will follow the event at the community center. So the event, they have the regular community center, you know, VFW and folks. And then Colonel Godfrey, who's going to come back, will be leading a fife and drum group and march from the community center over to Chase Park and which will have an actual dedication of the stone. It's kind of interesting. We have memorials for everything else, but we never had a Revolutionary War memorial. And, and let me tell you, there's a number of people who were in this town who participated and we're trying to acknowledge what they are. Okay. I was going to talk about the proclamation, but I'll sit down and you tell me when to get up.
Just wait. You could stay there. You're up next. Just a couple. I have just a question. I don't know if Dean wants to say anything, but on, on South Chatham, well, I can't remember how many years ago, the South Chatham became a neighborhood center. We, we were able to do the zoning.
Yeah.
The town, I mean, the, the whole village got together and that was, that was very successful. Is historic section going to be that, that, or is it something greater than that zone?
Well, the historic, the, the boundaries that Mass Historic wants to have effectively starts at Cocko, near Cocko Cove.
Yeah.
By the old schoolhouse, now the ice cream shop, working its way all the way, you know, into the Bethany Cemetery, which is very historic, you know, at the other end of town, and as well as the Baker Brothers. And there's just quite a few buildings in, in, along there. I like to think, I live in South Chatham. It's the best, you know, the builders haven't really found out yet about it yet. And we've got to be careful. Be good. But there's a, a lot of very historic buildings and, and it's, in addition to the Main Street area, which actually overlaps on the HBDC, it'll go down Pleasant Street and Forest Beach for part of the way.
Well, that's good.
And there are some really fascinating historic homes along there. Very well-kept. So that's the district that we're proposing.
Got it. Thank you. Anything else from the board? None? Any other public comments? See none? Okay. Let's continue with the agenda on our new business. And the first thing up is Historic Preservation Month Proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, Frank. If we didn't know it, we asked for you, the Select Board, to, to put forward a proclamation to declare May of 2022 as National Preservation Month. The, the Historical Commission and the HBDC, in conjunction with the Historical Society, have a, a group called the Chatham Preservation Awards. And we do this every year. We have, obviously we're interrupted by COVID, but this year we have, we have three awards which we're going to get. You've all received an invitation and hopefully you will RSVP. We've moved the time from 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock. So hopefully if we have a town meeting, it'll end before 4 o'clock. And, but anyway, if you, if you, you don't, you don't want me to read this or we'll? Yeah, go ahead. You could.
Okay. Whereas the historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, sustainability development, foresting, foresting local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the historic preservation is irrelevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for all Americans of all ages, all walks of life, all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a people. Whereas people-saving places is the theme for the National Preservation Month 2022, co-sponsored by the Chatham Historical, Historic Preservation Awards Committee and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, we, the Select Board, Chatham, Massachusetts, do proclaim May 22, 2022 as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of Chatham to join their fellow citizens across the United States to recognize and participate in this special observance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Dean and then Shereen?
I'll offer a motion.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that the Select Board proclaim May 2022 as Historic Preservation Month in Chatham, Massachusetts.
And I'll second it.
Second discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you very much. I know you guys have heady business, but you know, as preservationists like to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Good job, Frank. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the, the emergency agenda item has to do with the rescheduling of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, whether we should be outside or not. I just, can I ask the board a question first? Is there a consensus among the board that we should go outside? Never mind when, time or whatever. Dean and Shereen?
Mr. Chairman, I, I watched the, the, the meeting of the Health Board last night and they were really grappling with what to do in light of the uptick in the infection rate that Dr. Duncan, Duncanson presented to, to them with, with various charts. I don't think they, they reached a conclusion precipitously. It may or may not be the conclusion I would reach because I tend to believe that this, the pandemic is petering out generally. But they're obviously with some concern and I think they also were unwilling to impose severe limitations on the ability of the voters to attend town meeting. So I, I came away thinking probably the best thing to do would be to have it outside if we could possibly do that. But I did have a conversation with town manager this afternoon and I don't think the weather looks very good on that weekend. And I know there's been some communication from the moderator. You want me to go further into this? And I won't take too much time, but.
No, that's fine. I was just trying to move it along if there's, if you really feel you need more information, we'll go to.
So I would favor going outside if, if we can find a date. Thank you.
And Shereen and Corey?
Yeah. So I had a few people reach out to me. I'm sure that they reached out to several of their board members today concerned about an indoor meeting and the numbers, you know, that we are being presented with here. I agree that this is probably a lesser version of whatever we've been dealing with. However, we, we have an elderly population and a number of immune-compromised folks in town, as well as people coming to the meeting that might bring, that have small children that aren't vaccinated, that could be compromised by their, by their presence at, at town meeting. In, with that factor and the seriousness of the articles that we have, I, I want to, I'm hoping that we can have as many people at town meeting as possible. So I'm, I'm open to the idea of an outdoor meeting as well.
Okay. Corey?
No, no, no. I just want to keep a very open mind. I, I respect the, the most recent flood of concern that has come through based on following up with the Board of Health meeting the other evening and some general concern with, you know, the condition of COVID going on right now. But we're, we're in a pickle. No matter what we do, we're going to, we're going to get criticism. But I, I really just want to have an open conversation and get all the facts out there for us to make a most educated, efficient decision as possible. So I'm not 100% in favor going outside, but I'm very much open to having a conversation, weighing all the factors and making a very educated decision for the best interest of the voters. So.
Okay, fair. Jeff?
Yeah, there's been a spike of late in Chatham. I've had a bunch of people reach out and say they're probably more comfortable going outside than in. As Shereen noted, we do have an elderly population and I think it's probably more prudent to be outside. Now, that being said, it could be cold, it could be rainy, blah, blah, blah. But we're, we're subject to the, to the winds of the weather if we go outside. So I think maybe conversation about when to have it ought to be out there too.
And if we're furthering the discussion on this, I, I think we could keep in mind of being creative about presentations. You know, outs, I know outside is a challenge for the presentations that might have occurred during town meeting, but I think that we could be creative with Channel 18 and, and, and our website for links to some of those presentations.
Yeah, I, I received a, a number of, of calls and one in particular mentioned that they, they went, they were down at Cape Cod Hospital in that area and they went for a test. They were fine, but, but, but they were told that, that Chatham specifically is, is, had like 38 cases in the last, I don't know how, you know, short period of time. And he was a little concerned about that. So that's why I asked if there was consensus, how much there is. But let me go over to Jill. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So why don't I lay out what we were planning if it remains indoors? So we have three spaces available to us. So the large gym where we've been in the past, well, we figured out that we can do social distancing for chairs where we would have like two and then a space for three and still look like we can accommodate almost as much as, we typically have 500 in that room, including the bleachers. So a little less than that. But we also had designated the small gym as a mass-required area for people who are not comfortable and that could be socially distanced. And that could give us another 200 or so spaces, including the bleachers in the small gym. And then we have the auditorium available to us. Basically, as is, the auditorium does provide through the ventilation, an input of fresh air. The two gyms, however, would have to have open doors and then fans located within those two rooms. The, you've seen the large fan that we've used before. It's a little noisy, so we might use that for the one entrance of the, the large gym and trying to keep people socially distanced as well. And then if the board wanted to, you could require people to wear masks, although that was a recommendation by the Board of Health last night at their meeting. We had a team meeting today. If we do go outside, I, I was inquiring of our audio contractor, who's probably the most limited, and they're doing all of the town meetings. So for an outside town meeting for them, their availability for a Saturday is on May 14, which is the same date as we had planned for indoors, or Saturday, June 11. They do have availability during the week, which would be a Monday through Friday, the week of May 23, as well as the week of June 20. I, I think that we have about 500 chairs that we used for the last town meeting. We borrowed them for the school and there's a, a great transportation of those chairs that we have coordinated. But we probably need to rent maybe about 200 chairs just to make sure. We also need a porta potty rental. And then we need to make sure that we have those that are mobility compromised are able to get to their seats. And so how we, I think the last town meeting worked out pretty well, how we had people spaced. And I just have to make arrangements for a golf cart and cert to help check in people and get people out to their various chairs. So, so with a Saturday, June 11 at Veterans Field, and I had already reserved Veterans Field for Saturday, the 14th of May and the 15th, just in case. But for the June 11, one of the, the potential conflicts is if it does go into a Sunday, the next day is opening day for the Chatham A's. And they tip, their game's at 7:00 PM, but they typically want access to the field around 3. So while we had had a 1 o'clock start date for that second date, if we go outside for Sunday, June 12, we might need an earlier start time. And that's, you know, for your discussion. I don't know how it. I don't know how it conflicts possibly with some religious obligations of people. So I think that's it. We're doing an occupancy check at the middle school, again, if we're indoors. And the last thing that Mr. Nick Castro had mentioned, it's 10 days out. We looked at the weather forecast, and I guess it depends if you're a golfer or not, but I think there was a 64% chance of sun and the remainder percent chance of rain. So winds, I think, had, I just have to look at my notes. We had, we can all look at this again. Yeah, so Saturday, the, from what I saw on the 14th of May, 24% chance of rain, and winds are south by southwest at 10 miles per hour. But again, it's still 10 days away. So that's basically all I have. Oh, and then if it remains indoors, we do have video feed and a microphone, but we would need two deputy moderators to work the other rooms. And I just want to correct what I had said. For the large gym with socially distance, it could be 250-plus in attendance, and for the small gym is about 250-plus any use of the bleachers. So there is some reduction of who would be in the large room because of the social distancing with the chairs. So that's it. I'm happy to answer, oh, answer any questions. The other part of this, too, is the election, and the town clerk had reached out to the State Elections Division, and we cannot change the date of the election. So that is set for Thursday, May 19th. And I think that's all that I have to report.
Jill, if we were going outdoors, the dates are May 14th, what are they in order, June, May 23rd?
So if it's a Saturday, it's, May 14th is available and June 11th.
Okay.
And then during the week of, the week of May 23rd, so that would be a Monday through Friday, or the week of June 20th, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And the moderator has, I keep speaking, the moderator has looked at possibly a consent motion that could be presented, and I know he's in on the call today, but that's something that's usually addressed once we get to town meeting.
Okay. Comments? I see Dean.
Yeah, I, just two comments with, and I know you just mentioned this in passing, Jill, in terms of requiring masks indoors, and I know the Board of Health considered that and chose to make a recommendation, not a requirement. I'm not sure whether you can legally, constitutionally, require a mask to attend town meeting, because that's a meeting of the voters of the town. That would have to be, I think, run by the town council. With respect to the election, and I know there's some flexibility and apparently some historical precedent, which perhaps the moderator is going to talk about, but there would be an anomaly, I think, because if we schedule this after the election, this warrant is the warrant of this board, and there will be a change in this board. So the members of the Select Board that will be on the panel will not be the same identically as the board that voted in this warrant. It just seems to me a little bit unusual to have a different Select Board composition sitting at and advocating for, or against certain articles that were voted by a previous board. That's a little bit concerning to me, but maybe the moderator may have some comment about that. And I'll add one other comment. The moderator is circulating a potential consent calendar, as Jill said, that it may reduce the time. And I'm certainly personally hopeful that we might be able to get this meeting done in one day, if we really push it.
Yeah, did you hear that the Board of Health was making, wearing a mask mandatory? I thought it was a recommend...
It was a recommendation. There was some discussion about it, but they ultimately voted a recommendation.
A recommendation, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jeff?
Well, a recommendation is folks, you know, wear a mask if they so desire, and don't if they don't. So it's a recommendation. I think it's prudent to wear a mask, but if some folks don't want to, then I don't have to. But that is a recommendation. The Board of Health has been consistent in that recommendation all along, to be honest with you. You know, be honest with you, if we could ever have it inside, that's probably, I think we did lose some voters when it was outside. I think it was tougher for older people. I think the weather was tougher for older people, getting them back and forth. So there's some way we could craft it inside. I kind of lean that way, but if folks have really worked up about COVID, and I understand, then I guess I would go with outside, so.
Yeah, I was getting a lot of pushback from an elderly...
I got a lot of, I got some emails today that people were worried about being inside. They were, they were.
Corey?
Again, this is the no-wind situation we're in. I mean, so I'm just gonna kind of play devil's advocate a little bit. 14th, if we stay on track with our original plans, and I don't know what the numbers are specifically for, like, Chatham, the Cape, so I don't know if Dr. Duncanson or someone from the Board of Health is on, but I wouldn't mind just getting a little more clarity on the data for us, so we can do it, you know, factor that in. If we were to push it out till June 11th, you know, just some thoughts, if large gatherings are gonna be kind of spreaders and factor into it, it's, that's the weekend after gradu, you know, the local graduations, a lot of gatherings and stuff. So are we gaining anything? And I don't know. I don't know. I don't think there is a magic, you know, date that we can put for. So I don't feel strongly really one way or another. Part of me deep, I guess part of me slightly wants to stay on track, but I just don't know how we do that with accommodating the concerns that are out there right now.
Yeah, I see Dr. Duncanson's hands up. Welcome, Bob.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you'd like, I can give you the quick COVID-19 update.
Okay. Please do.
All right. Let me just, let me get rid of my hand first of all, and then I will share my screen and give you the latest numbers. All right, can everybody see the, I've got the Chatham confirmed COVID-19 cases on a monthly basis?
Yes.
This is one you've seen since the very beginning of the pandemic. And I think the take-home message here is, in the month of April 2022, we had 58 cases, confirmed cases, and that is compared to only eight cases in March. And we had 22 cases in February, just as we were coming off the Omicron surge, if you will. You know, we're not near where we were, say, in January or December of last year, but we're definitely higher than where we've been historically at this time of the year. Usually, you know, in April and then through the summer, through July or so, cases drop off fairly dramatically, and we're not seeing that in April of this year. We're seeing a bit of an anomaly with an increase in cases compared to what we saw in 2020 and 2021. And I think that's a reflection of the fact that we're dealing with a couple of new variants, which are more highly contagious even than Omicron was, although on the basis of everything we've seen so far, they do not cause more severe disease. Looking at it on a weekly basis, because around the beginning of the year, I started tracking case, confirmed cases in Chatham on a weekly basis, because I think it makes it a little bit more informative than a monthly. So here is the past 10 weeks, going back to roughly the beginning of February. And you can see for February and most of March, we were exceedingly low. We were averaging, you know, two, maybe three cases a week, and we actually had a couple of weeks where we had no new reported cases. However, since the beginning of April, we have seen a fairly steady uptick in cases, to the point that we are now averaging somewhere between 15 and 20 cases a week. You know, it's nowhere near where we were back in, say, December and January, but it is significant that we're seeing this uptake. And just keep in mind that these are confirmed cases that are reported to the state. So this does not take into account all the folks that may be testing themselves at home with a home test kit, because there is no requirement that those results be reported to either the local health department or the state. So in reality, the expectation is, by all the public health experts around the country, that caseloads are probably higher than are reflected in the numbers that we have available to show you. And then just our percent positivity, that is shown on the graph that we have right now. We have a definite uptick since roughly the beginning of April, and we're almost, we were almost up to as high as we were during the first surge at the very beginning of the pandemic. Nowhere near where we were with the Omicron surge in December and January of this year, but still higher than, you know, we were on average. And one of the take-home messages is we are above that 5% threshold. Anything above that is generally indicative of community transmission. So that is another thing to keep in mind. Our percent positivity at 9.14% in the most recent reporting, which was last Thursday, that was the second highest on Cape Cod. The Cape average was at 6.15%. The statewide average was at 4.39. So we were between three-quarters and double the state and the county average. Also, the CDC, in the most recent update that I saw yesterday, they have now elevated Barnstable for community level to medium. We were low, they have bumped Barnstable County up to medium, indicating, as was alluded to earlier, that there are, you know, we're seeing more and more cases on Cape Cod as a whole. I will say, in looking at the individual town data, contrary to the beginning of the pandemic, when we saw, say, the highest town percentages in areas like Yarmouth, Barnstable, and Falmouth, because they had high populations, over the last couple of weeks, the highest town averages have been in the, you know, say, Chatham, Orleans, Wellfleet, Harwich area, in an area, you know, the smaller towns are actually seen to be getting hit harder right now than they were before. And then just finally, the average daily incident rate, which also mirrors the percent positivity, the average daily incident rate was 38 as of last Thursday, and that was the highest on the Cape. So as opposed to a couple of months ago, when we were the lowest on the Cape, we are now either the highest or the second highest on the Cape. The Barnstable County average daily incident rate was 24.6, and statewide was at 28, and Chatham was at 38. So significantly higher than the county or the statewide average. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on very quickly, because it was mentioned, was the Board of Health vote last night. Yes, the Board of Health did vote a recommendation for mask-wearing. I did speak with a couple of members of the Board of Health this afternoon, when they saw that you had this emergency discussion on your agenda tonight. And while the board has not taken any formal vote yet, obviously, we could schedule an emergency meeting of the Board of Health. There did seem to be some sentiment that an outdoor meeting might be appropriate, given the circumstances. The board did not vote specifically on that topic last night. They were waiting to see basically this week's data, which we would get on Thursday, but they, there was some sentiment that an outdoor meeting, you know, would be something they would strongly urge the board to consider. So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Dr. Bob, the data that you have and talking about with the, is it, it's a week or two old?
Yes, the, well, with the exception of the, the monthly data is as of the end of last month. The weekly data is as of the 29th, because I do a Saturday to Friday accounting. The other data, the percent positivity and the average daily incident rate, that is data from the state that comes out on Thursdays, and it's for the two weeks prior to that period. So it is always that statewide data is a little bit behind.
Okay, thank you. Dean? You look like...
Corey, you have a floor. Do you have any...
No, you're okay, Corey? Okay.
Thank you. Bob, last night, I think Chairman Beckley asked what the rate was for hospitalizations and mortality, and I think you said mortality was pretty flat. The hospitalizations were up in the state. Do we have any data on hospitalizations on Cape Cod?
I do not have access to Cape Cod-specific data right now, but on a statewide average, the hospitalizations are showing an uptick. The death rate has been fairly flat.
Okay. And I'll just make the comment, and I greatly respect the Board of Health. We've all, we've all said that right through this whole pandemic, and I think they conducted themselves very honorably last night. Going forward, if they were to address the location of the town meeting or even consider whether to mandate masks, I would hope that would be looked at by our council, because I'm not sure even the Board of Health has the authority to do that. But anyway, and I don't pose that as an objection, I just want to make sure we do it right. Thanks. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Well, just a, just a comment, if you might. Well, the data doesn't really give me a lot of comfort, and it kind of skews it towards, you know, towards going outside, in my mind, even though it might be a little dated, but certainly doesn't look like cases are going down. And if we were to err on any side, I think we ought to err on the side of being conservative, given the nature of our demographic in town. So I, you know, I'd weigh in as favoring going outside, only because of the data, that data we just saw and the nature of our demographic. And I try to, try to stay in sync with the schedule we've got. I think it might be a little cooler than we want, but I open that up to discussion as well. But if, I just, I'm swinging that way, outside. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, Corey, go ahead.
Notice the follow-up on, so your thoughts kind of staying on track for 514, just shifting locations?
Correct.
I would kind of agree...
Umbrellas recommended?
Sorry.
Ponchos?
Again, if I might, I think we give up, I know we gave up some voters. I think some elderly voters didn't attend. So I think if we do a better job planning to get folks there that want to get there that we know about, I, you know, I think that's important, you know, and bundle up because...
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I'm kind of leaning with, with the way the data is, and it's a day or two old, it's going, it's going in the wrong direction.
Right.
And I, and I agree with, actually, I agree with everything that's being said here. We talk about the, the hospitalization rate and so forth, it's sort of flat. At the same time, though, we're gonna lose voters either way. There's gonna be a number of people that won't want to go into, inside. I mean, I've already said that. That's kind of the way I'm leaning, and I agree, I'd like to keep it on schedule. I don't know, May 14th is good, or what about, well, let's, let's just stay with whether or not we want to go outside or not. Go ahead, Shereen, and then...
Does anybody have a long-term forecast for the 14th and the 15th?
Remember, this is the Cape.
Oh, I understand that, but I also, I understand that, and if it was a full moon on, at that time, it probably would have a lot of rain and a different wind than southwest is not a bad wind. That means it's not gonna, I just want, it would be chilly.
Oh.
But I don't think we have that right now.
Okay. Before I go on, Mr. Moderator, Bill, are you available? Any comments? Thoughts?
I am, I'm here, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I will, obviously, maybe the decision of the when and the where the town meeting is held is completely up to the Select Board. You've heard from Dr. Duncanson, and if it can be done on May 14th at 1:00 PM, and if you decide to shift to Veterans Field, I think we can certainly work together to make that happen. I think that the, it's, it's up to you, but it's probably important to make it known tonight what your decision is. I am by no means an expert on the weather. I did look at the long-term forecast a little while ago, and I think it appears that the 14th and the 15th will both be sunny in the 60, 70% range. But if we're on May 14th and you decide that Veterans Field is where we're gonna do it, I, again, think it appropriate to make the decision now, so that we can make these sorts of accommodations with... with golf carts and cert and the other things that Jill had mentioned. But I will go where you tell me to go, and I'm frequently told where to go.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dean, Jeff, and Corey. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, you had outlined a scenario in an email this afternoon that you sent around where the, the town meeting dates would sort of surround the election. Do you have any comment on the point I was making earlier about the warrant being, the warrant of this board?
I, I understand the point, but I don't see that as a problem. Some communities actually have their town meeting before their town, or rather, their town election before their town meeting, and they, they don't deal with that as a problem. And beyond that, in decades gone by, we have had town meetings continue into a second week after the town election. Historically, town meetings were on Mondays, the elections were on Thursdays, but there have been occasions, again, going back in the, probably 30 or 40 years ago, where town meeting reconvened after the town election. So I don't see any legal or, or other problem with having the election before the town meeting were to be concluded, and that wouldn't be a problem if we can meet on May 14th.
Yeah, I, I wasn't raising, thank you. I wasn't raising it as a legal objection. I just, it seemed to be an oddity. But if that being the case, we might want to consider a June date instead of the May date if, if we're, if we're looking for the, some better assurance that we might have better weather.
Okay. Well, I have, I have Jeff, but I have, Dr. Duncanson, your hand's still up. Is that from before?
No, somebody asked if we had a long-range forecast.
Yeah.
The long-range weather forecast right now is, this is for Saturday, May 14th. Considerable clouds early, some decrease in clouds later in the day. High 66, winds southwest 10 to 20 miles an hour. And then for Sunday on the 15th, it's mostly cloudy skies early, then partly cloudy in the afternoon. High around 65, winds southwest 10 to 20.
Okay. All right. I had, thank you. I had Jeff and, and Corey, then Shereen.
Southwest is better than northeast, I'll say. And I just want to make, I guess, reiterate the point that, given the COVID numbers, we're likely to kind of lose some voters, whether it's inside or outside. I mean, I, I think, you know, inside, we're going to lose some voters, and I think outside, we're going to lose some voters as well, which is too bad. But anyway, thanks.
Corey, and then Shereen.
No. As, as, as in previous said, if we go inside, we lose some voters. If we go outside, we're going to lose some voters. But if we're going to go outside, we're yielding more with a focus on health, safety consciousness. So frankly, I would move forward to the 14th as a date, go outside. Clouds are fine, winds is fine. We're hardy New Englanders. As long as there's no rain or thunder in the, in the forecast, that's, I would suggest we move to the 14th.
Okay. Shereen?
Aside from the Ospreys, which were very cool last year, I think one of the things, and I'm fine with the 14th and outside, I just, I'm, what my major concern will be, and it, it was last year, is getting the information, the presentation to the voters that, you know, we have a mechanism in place that they can see any information that might have gone up on a screen. Obviously, we wouldn't have any screens, correct, Jill?
Correct.
Right. So, or no PowerPoint presentations. So how do we address that, number one, because I think information is key. We, we, we had some issues last year in that communication side. I think that that's important, that that plan be in place for whatever outside venue we decide. And I'm fine with the 14th and 15th.
Let me go over to Jill. Anything?
Well, we have the audio vendors for the 14th and 15th, so that's a check. So it's, it's up to the Board. If you want to move outdoors, we can certainly make those arrangements.
Any public comment? I don't see any hands. Yes, I. Oh, Steve, go ahead, Steve. And then I have someone else online here. It says guest, 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 but we'll get to that next. Go ahead, welcome, Steve. Give your name and so forth.
Welcome, Steve West, Chatham.
24 Old Harper Road, president of the Chatham Anglers baseball team. I'm, I'm glad that it appears that the, the Board is leaning toward the, the May 14th and 15th dates, and I'm fully supportive of that from the Anglers' perspective and from my own perspective as well. The, the question I would have is that Jill mentioned several other dates that she can get the AV people for. And if the long-range forecast doesn't play out on the 14th and the 15th, yours truly would vote for several other dates before the June 11th and June 12th dates. And, and I was, I didn't want, I was wondering how we could, I wanted that on the record, so to speak, because the, the week of June 16th, I mean, I'm sorry, the June 20th, that Jill mentioned, you know, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or actually, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm sorry, we're away that, those three days. So that would work perfectly for us. And the week of May the 23rd, if, if in fact, the 14th and 15th don't work, it's during the week. Again, our team isn't here yet, so that would be preferred for us. But having it on the 11th and the 12th, which I know is the Saturday and the Sunday, we would certainly, the 11th literally is our last practice day before the season starts. There will literally be deliveries of concessions. There'll be deliveries of merchandise. There will be field work that needs to be done, that, that usually gets done on that day. And, and I know that's, I'm, I'm looking small term into my own little window, but since there are other options, I would just hope that the, that the Board would, would consider that before they, before they went to the 11th and the 12th as their, as their backup date. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I see someone's hands up, but there's not a name. All it says is guest.
It's Elaine Gibbs, because every time I sign on with my initials, I get bounced off, but when I change it to guest, I can get on. So.
Okay, well, welcome, Elaine. You're on as a guest three times, so don't worry.
If you can see the guest, it's probably me. I'm, I'm very, I feel very good about the Board considering moving it outside. The problem is, you know, for two years, elderly people have been told, and immunosuppressed people have been told, you know, to take precautions. And there are a lot of people who can't sit in a room for six or seven hours with a mask on. And the other problem is that if masks are optional, which I still think they should be, that there are people who are asymptomatic. They don't even know they have it. And so I think there is a potential, if we have it inside, number one, a lot of people won't show up because they don't feel they should put themselves at risk, which I think is kind of disenfranchising them. But we, we, there could be a potential for a super-spreader, and I don't think that's good optics for Chatham to have an indoor meeting where potentially the following week or two, we could have a huge rise in numbers. I think outdoors, I think a lot of people really liked it. And if you can make accommodations for those situations that were an issue last year, I think, I, I think that they were really exciting meetings, and I think people really, really enjoyed doing that. And we can bundle up. But I'm very glad to see that you're reconsidering this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other public comments? I'm not seeing any, any, anything more from the Board. Corey?
Just a question, just throw it out for the conversation. I, do we want to maintain the same start time? Is there any benefit in changing that? Just a question. I mean, I'm, I'm just.
I don't know. The sun's up a little higher at 1 o'clock. We could do 12.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah. Any other comments besides that? I love it.
Moderator stands up.
Oh, okay. Bill?
Oh, just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to respond to Corey. Because the warrant's already been posted and the 14-day notice requirement, we can't change that effectively.
Well, that, settle that one.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have the same emergency waivers that we had for the past two years for that.
Oh, good point.
Easy enough.
Okay. I see Elaine's hand's still up. Want to comment on that, or?
Nope, I'm definitely, sorry, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Dean? Yeah, we can. I think I'd look for a motion. I think we have consensus.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I moved that the location of the annual town meeting for 2022 on May 14th, Saturday at 1:00 p.m. Be moved from the Monomoy Regional Middle, Middle School to Veterans Field, outdoors.
Second?
Clarification, do you want to add the, if we need to go an extra date, that it's at that location as well?
Yes. And I'll add to the motion that the continuation of the meeting would be on Sunday, May 15th, at the same location. We don't choose the time for that, do we?
But it's done at, we make a recommendation, but it's done at.
An at-town meeting, the moderator and the, and the body. Thank you.
Jeff?
Would it be circumspect or prudent now? Should we have a nor'easter rather than a southwestern to think about what we do if we do get a storm? Because you could just as easily get a nor'easter.
Well, let's do this one.
I don't mean, I don't mean to, I mean, I think we should think about when, to Steve's point, I think we should think about when the rain date might be. Do I vote? I totally agree with outside 14, 15, but I think we ought to have a discussion about rain dates as well. Thanks.
That'll be, let's, I'd like to finish this vote first and, and let, comments first? I mean, see, Corey's raising, maybe raising his hand.
I'm going to put my foot in my mouth anyway, so whoever that voice is out there, be kind. So, so if we had a rain date, I know there's been some talk about the 11th, well, not, the 11th is kind of a primary date that's thrown out there. Other days that were mentioned were during the week, which I think adds another dynamic concern with people working in school and everything else. I don't know how the Board would feel about that. And we can certainly have that conversation before we take this vote. Do I dare throw out the concept of we are strongly, strongly, strongly trying to pull this off on the 14th outside? That is our, that is our primary objective, but an absolute backup plan as we go inside? I mean, I just, this for discussion purposes, because the vendors available both that day, location doesn't matter. I'm sure they're not going to set up until Thursday anyway. I'm just throwing it out for discussion. I'm just trying to cover all our bases here.
Shereen?
Other towns do tents. What about a tent?
We can look into it, but we'd have to get tents for the entire field. And so that, we haven't looked into that lately. We had considered that, I think, a year ago or so. The other thing is, we have to, with the irrigation and in the field, I don't want to throw up too many obstacles, but it's certainly something that we can look into. It's just that it's two weeks away. That, that's our only constraint.
Yeah, you're going to put something into the ground on the field? Anyway, yeah, I'd like to get a vote on this first, and then we can discuss it. And if we want to continue discussing it, we, we have always just made one, you know, each time, but it's worthwhile discussing a plan. Let's call it now C. All right, we have a motion and a second for May 14th and May 15th. Any further discussion?
I second it, yeah.
Seconded it? Okay. All right, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. In continuation of this, is it still legal? Yeah, we look as, as a backup. Do you want to spend time discussing it now, or do you want to consider it later in another meeting, one week from now? Or I, I'm not, I'm just saying that as a matter of.
Mr. Chairman, two possibilities have been thrown out. One is to do it on the 14th and 15th, but go indoors. The other is to have a tent. Maybe Jill can have some additional information in time for next week's board meeting, and we could decide on a rain, rain date then. We always do have a rain date. It's usually on a Monday in the evening, but.
Sure, we can do that. And, and also, if we were inside, I believe that the setup was going to occur on Friday, but certainly I can report next week, not next week, but on.
Maybe the numbers go way down and we'll come back inside. You never know. Corey?
Let's just put, let's put that off some, let's put that off to next week's agenda.
Yeah.
We'll be closer to the date, better idea with weather, more information. That's, that's.
I think that's fine. We have a busy agenda next week, sort of. Yeah.
Well, it is posted for the 14th, so that's the one thing we need to make sure of. And if we have to, as the moderator said in the past, if we have to get a few of us there to open the meeting and then recess or adjourn it to another date, we can certainly do that. So we'll watch the weather. It just looked at the extended forecast for me. It looked like the week following, or that Monday, was looking worse than it was for the, for the Saturday and Sunday. But we'll figure it out, and we'll report back.
All right. The moderator has his hand up. Bill, still up, or was that from before? Or I mean, as new, rather.
That was from before, Mr. Chairman. My apologies.
Okay. No, thank you. All right. That takes care of, of our emergency agenda. And next up is our drinking, water testing, and pumping station. And Tom Barr is going to give us an update. I might mention, this is not about the water ban. This, the water ban's on next week's agenda. I was trying to get it on here and out, but we couldn't make that happen. But it'll, it'll be on next week. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board. Thanks for having me. I hope I do a good job for Mr. Temple here. So real quick, we're just going to talk about well four. Everything's good there. We've raised the gallons per minute to about 600 GPMs coming out of that well, which is where we want to run it for this summer, which will help us take off some of the load that we won't have from well eight being offline due to the PFAS. Then we go on to the well five temporary treatment. The vessel had an accident where it fell off the truck when it was being shipped from Arkansas. There is some damage to the vessel, but manufacturer has made those repairs, and it has been shipped. It left yesterday. It says that it was supposed to leave today, but it got sent out a day early. It's due to arrive in Chatham on Friday and will be put down on the pad that was constructed a couple of weeks ago. So we should have that vessel on site Friday. The work inside the facility has been ongoing. All of the pipes for the headers have been removed. Once the vessel is in place, they'll start putting in the new piping that'll go to the vessel. And we're hoping to have that vessel online the week before Memorial Day weekend to get the pilot testing done, and then it will be into the system of Memorial Day. So everything should be on schedule for the temporary now that the vessel has been repaired. Any questions on the temporary facility before we move on to the permanent, or we just want to?
Yeah, I have, I have two hands up, Tom. One, Jeff Dykens, and the other, Shereen, and, well, everybody. Okay. Jeff, Shereen, Corey, and Dean.
So, Mr. Barr, the, the new, the new tank is warranted as to service. They've stamped it approved, and we've got it papered to a fairly well?
Yep. So Weston Sampson Engineering was working with TIG, the manufacturer, to make sure that everything was going to be operating as it should. They ran it through tests, and all the tests came back. So we should be getting an approval letter from Weston Sampson Engineering on that filter passing all the tests from TIG.
Just a quick follow-up. It's going to be, you think, in place before Memorial Day, but we'll have time to test it as well before Memorial Day, right?
Yeah. So, so it'll be in place this Friday. It's being delivered this Friday.
Okay.
Yeah. So the vessel will be in place, and then the following week, they're going to start plumbing it. They'll, they'll put all the piping that needs to go to the vessel. Once the plumbing is all set up, the carbon will be brought in, added to the filter. We're going to do a bunch of pilot tests to the sample, to the filter, taking samples from various points to make sure that it's doing what it needs to do. It'll be run through the system to waste to make sure everything's operating the way it's supposed to, according to the DEP requirements. And then, once DEP approves our samples, say that everything is good, we meet in the MCLs, then we'll be able to put it into the system, hopefully by Memorial Day weekend to help with the water.
Super. Thank you.
No, you answered my questions as well. Thanks, Tom.
Corey?
Just a slight follow-up. So we tested the vessel. Obviously, it was damaged, it was repaired. Everything appears fine. But we have any follow-up assurances on the warranty if something doesn't go well in a short term down, down the road?
Yeah. So what Weston Sampson Engineering is requested from TIG is that they start building a new vessel for us, because this temporary vessel was going to be used in the permanent facility, as we've discussed in the past. So what's going to happen is they're going to build, they're started the process already of building a new vessel. to build, they're started the process already of building a new vessel to replace this one. So, this vessel is not going into the permanent plant as of right now. We're going to have a brand-new one that'll take the place of this one. The damage that was done was exterior, so the inside workings, from, as they could tell from running their pressure tests, there was no sign of any damage to that. It was, a leg was bent, so they replaced that leg. And then, one of the ports where the piping will be hooked up to was tweaked as well, and they made the adjustment on that. So, we'll be able to hook up the way that we should be able to. So, again, inside, there was, from what they could tell with their pressure tests, there was no damage to the, to what we call the vanes of the filter.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I sort of started with that one, right? Dean?
I think we all did. And, Tom, you've answered generally the question, and specifically the questions I was going to ask about the vessel. Are we going to be charged anything extra to get the, the brand-new one when that comes in?
No, as of right now, they're, they're saying that they will replace that vessel because of the fact that it fell off of the truck in their shop, like in their warehouse as it was leaving.
Via swap?
I will get, yeah, I will get Weston and Sampson Engineering to get actual written proof of that, like an actual documentation of that. But that's what the engineering firm is telling me as of right now.
Well, that sounds like a good solution to that situation. I just had one question about well number four, which I think you touched on at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
We're pumping, what, four hours a day for that?
Yeah, it's going up a little bit, because we are doing our flushing of the water mains right now, because we haven't been able to do that the past couple of years, because we stopped because of COVID, and then obviously our water restrictions that we'll get into next week. But it's about five hours right now, five to six hours. So, well four, we pumped that up to 600 gallons per minute, because that's what we want to run it at this summer. So, we wanted to get it up there, get our chemical dosage correct and operational.
So, we would have well four pumping of 600 gallons in peak, in the peak period of the summer. How, how many gallons do you think we would pump out of well five with the temporary fix?
So, well five is slated to be about 400 to 430 gallons per minute. So, well five, well eight, when well eight and well five were both on, well five was giving us the 420, and well eight was giving us about 540 to 550. So, we should be a little bit above what we were at with six, being able to get up to the 600 gallons per minute. So, it's basically giving us an extra 50 gallons per minute.
Okay. Well, that's a good piece of information, because we're going to be talking about the water ban next week, and I wanted to know that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Dean. Anything else? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
So, we'll go on to the permanent, the permanent facility for wells five and eight, the PFOS treatment plant. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to go over the preliminary technical plans. We did some reviews, had some comments, some of the things that they're going to be modifying. They're looking to increase the building size a little bit to add for more chemical feed systems. They're also looking to add movable panels on the side to make it easier to replace any vessels or to add carbon. If we need to change the carbon, it'll be easier to remove the sidewalls, and the machinery can get in and take care of that. They're at about a 60% design right now, so they're still working on that. We have executed a contract with Blue Leaf Inc. to do a pilot study. This study will be done between June and July at the well five temporary building, the PFOS temporary plant. And this is to help us kind of figure out between, after we have green sand, which will be at the new permanent facility, to help with the iron and manganese removal. It'll help us decide whether or not the resin or the, the GAC will be a better fit for the permanent facility, because right now, the iron and manganese is what's going to cause our biggest problem. So, once it goes through the green sand, if the green sand does what we need it to do, then we may be able to use the resin, which will be a little bit lighter of a material than the activated carbon. So, we're looking to do that pilot study June and July. So, that's what we got for wells five and eight permanent. Any questions on that?
Yeah, Tom--
12, 10, and 11?
Yeah, I, I was, I had, I wrote notes to myself. I think I understood what you said, but I'm not familiar with green sand filtration followed by resin, but it doesn't take the place, it takes the place of activated carbon?
Yeah. So, so green sand filtration is, is one separate thing. So, that is used for iron and manganese removal.
Right.
We have that over at our Morton Road Treatment Facility. That's what we use there. We don't have PFOS at the Morton Road Facility, so that is simply for iron and manganese removal, and that's what green sand is for. That, that's been proven to do a very good job of removing the iron and manganese. Resin is just another type of material that they have been using for PFOS removal. And then, the GAC, the activated carbon, is another type. So, resin and the activated carbon are two types of PFOS removal. And we're going to decide by running this pilot study after it goes through the green sand, which one works better for us. Will it be the resin, or will it be the activated carbon?
And you'll be able to do, do that on-site. So, you, okay, it's not a--
Yeah.
You got it. Okay, I understand. Jeff, you okay with that?
No, that was great. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up. Go ahead.
All right. So, wells 10 and 11, Mass DEP provided approval to bid the project. The official approval pending due to DEP backlog and staffing shortages, so we're waiting to hear back from them on that. The revised plans were submitted to the planning board. There were some concerns that they had, where they wanted Weston and Sampson Engineering to do some calculations and provide that for the stormwater, so that could be put onto the file. There were two amendments that were provided to answer the bidder questions that, to incorporate solar panels for the roof. So, those, everything was put out Thursday, April 21st. All the sub-bids were opened, except for the electrical due to that solar panel issue. So, that one, we opened the other day. I believe that was last Friday that one went through, April 29th. So, all of the bids for the sub-bids have been sent in, and we have those, and we'll be going through them, like Weston and Sampson Engineering and the town officials. We'll go through the bid process and see which contractors, which is, the general contract bid opening is scheduled for May 5th. So, that's where we are with 10 and 11. So, that's making progress there. Any questions, 10 and 11?
I don't see any. Let me just ask, because it's on here. You have any indication that the, the bids are going to come in over what we estimated?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is. I'm not sure. I saw that, too, with Mr. Temple put that in there. So, I'm not aware of that. I haven't had any discussions with him or Weston and Sampson Engineering on that. So, I, I don't have a comment on that. I'd like to talk to Leah Stanton in the engineering group, as well as Mr. Temple, when he comes back to see what that was about. I'm not sure--
Okay.
--where that came from. So, I have no comment on that one.
All right.
Any other questions regarding the design of 10 and 11? I think we're pretty solid.
No, I don't see any. Go ahead.
All right.
Thanks.
Pumping, we are down this month. We're down about 14.9%, which is good. And then, that's, as you can see in the charts, we're pretty solid. We're, we're going about average. And then, the last thing I have is that water main replacement on Bridge Street, the water and sewer design. They repaired the issues that we had with the, where things weren't draining properly, and there were some issues for the marina. So, that was all taken care of last week. Hopefully, everything's good there. I haven't heard anything else. I know Shereen was involved in that, so I'm not sure if you've heard anything from Andy and the Stage Harbor Marina. Are they satisfied with the--
I haven't, I haven't heard from, I haven't heard from, from the Micus, but I did drive by the other day, and it looks like everything's really smoothed out along their access to the boatyard.
Okay. And that's, and that's all I have. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, that's great, Tom. Any, any comments or questions? Let me see if there's anybody has a hand up, a public question, public comment. I don't see any, Tom, so thank you very much.
All right. I look forward to next week.
Okay.
Water restrictions.
Okay. Next on our agenda is public comments on, on our business agenda, and really, there are only two issues, one being, not issues, but two agenda items. One, a one-day alcohol permit, which is really a reissue for a different date for the Commercial Fishermen's Alliance, and a revision to the temporary outdoor dining regulations we talked about the last time. So, I see any public comments? I don't see any here, none. Let's, okay, let's go over to the one-day alcohol permit. And--
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move to grant a special one-day liquor permit for all alcoholic beverages to Jennifer Bryant on behalf of Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance for Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at 1566 Main Street, West Chatham. This is a reissue. This is--
Okay. Give a second.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Pretty normal. Okay. Let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Next up is our, consider revisions to the temporary, temporary outdoor dining regulations, which really, in effect, are making them compatible with what the state has done, or what the governor has said. Is Katie on? You need to do that? Katie?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you, thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You'll see in front of you the recommended changes to the outdoor dining regulations that were first adopted on June 9th of 2020 and amended on May 23rd. I believe that's March 23rd, 2021. The only changes are in the intent and in the expiration, and both of those changes are to reflect the latest date of the extended order, allowing for temporary outdoor dining. Our group, our internal group has met. We didn't see any need for further changes to the regulations or to the policies, and so we are making this recommendation to the board to adopt this for the coming summer season. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I think we, we were given this after the, was this posted on Friday, this particular attachment, Alec?
It was not posted with the--
So, maybe we should just read the language we're adding for the benefit of the public. It's very short. I'm happy to do that, or we could have the clerk do it.
Sure. Go ahead, Dean. Thank you.
Yeah, under the, this is the Town of Chatham Select Board Temporary Outdoor Dining Areas Policy and Procedures Approved, 6/9/2020, amended 3/23/2021. And under the, in the paragraph A, called intent, we are add inserting among the dates, or between the dates, June 1, 2020, and COVID order number 19, COVID 19 order number 50 of September 10th, 2020, the word "and." And we are adding at the end, "An Act Making Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2022 to Provide for Supplementing Certain Existing Appropriations and for Certain Other Activities and Projects." And that's all in quotes, signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker on April 1, 2022, which allows, and we are striking some language, and we are adding at the end, "Temporary Outdoor Dining Provisions to Continue." And the only other change is at the end, in paragraph H, "Expiration," we are striking some language and inserting, quote, "an act, make, in compliance with an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2022 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and for certain other activities and projects," end of quote, signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker on April 1, 2022. And then, the language continues as it was. "This temporary program shall remain in effect until," and we're striking the previous date and inserting "April 1, 2023." Those are the revisions that are in place, and I'm happy to offer a motion to approve the policy as revised.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, seeing none. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. Katie?
Thank you very much.
Okay. That finishes our agenda for the public. We need to go now into executive session and not return to public meeting. Motion, Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I move that this, that the board select would go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Number 3, "To Discuss Strategy With Respect to Collective Bargaining, and the Chair declares that such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body with no return to open session," parentheses, "Chatham Municipal Employees Association slash Chatham Managers Association and Collins Center Compensation Plan," close paren.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. Start with Shereen.
Aye.
Aye.
Corey? Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, so, we're going into executive session. Thank you, Chatham. Have a good week.